The Pledge of Allegiance of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just the person we're looking for.
Sorry, I'm walking right into the Pledge of Allegiance.
You're Emily, correct?
I am, yes.
Would you like to address the council for community concerns?
Uh, sure.
We got you first.
You can actually come on in here.
Yeah.
Sounds great.
We've got a full house today.
You do have a full house today. Well, I'm Emily Crabtree. I'm the executive director of the Laverne Area Community Foundation. Laverne area means Rock County, and your city sits in half of Rock County, correct? And so I'm here to talk to you about a program that we're launching that can benefit the vitality of the city of Jasper through the community foundation that I'm the director for. Before COVID hit, we were launching something called a matching funds event, and we never got to you because COVID came and it kind of shut everything down. I'm not sure who I should address this to, but I just wanted you to see this. Page two is an example of what we were trying to do. And we were, the cities outside of Laverne, we were attempting, I'm sorry, page three, to suggest that we want to encourage giving outside of the city of Laverne because Laverne is where most of the donations come from. But yet, all of the communities in Rock County can apply for grants. Jasper is, I think, the only community we have not done a project in because you've never applied for a grant. And maybe you didn't know that you could. Your city, your nonprofit organizations, as I was walking in, I saw a club. I'm not sure what the Courtsites Club or...
Courtsiders.
Yes, that's a nonprofit organization to apply for things that will better your community. And so the challenge was, is if Jasper area could raise $5,000, we would match $5,000, and you would have a $10,000 endowment to start in your community to do things. Now, endowment means long-term money, so we use a formula to protect the initial investment, but yet pay out the money. So in that first year, you'd probably have about $300 to do something with. Maybe it's a new park bench, or it's a new sign for your community. It's something outside of your normal infrastructure kinds of things. The more people give, the bigger it grows, the more money you have to do projects. And so on that note, when COVID came and kind of put a halt to that, we are launching something, I don't know how many of you are familiar with Red Arrow, the former Rock County Red Arrow, if that ever got up this direction. But Red Arrow dissolved itself in 2019, and yet givers of it were still asking about it, and so were the organizations. So LACF decided to pick up the ball and reinvent it because it really was an old model. And so we're launching something in November called Grow Your Community. And it's a countywide launch. Every postal box in Rock County will get a mailing, and it will have a logo, I'm sorry if I'm infringing on your space here, that looks like this, Max, your community, okay? The word "your" is the key in there because people who live in the Jasper area can check the Jasper box, and your donation will go into the Jasper Fund held at the community foundation, started by the community foundation, okay? Because we want you to know that we're invested in you because you're part of Rock County. So if you during this match your community, the people of Jasper or who associate with Jasper can raise 5,000, that'd be a great way to get your match, and then have some funds to do some things that you maybe couldn't do otherwise. Of course, bigger gets the more it grows, et cetera, et cetera. I need your help to spread the word outside of the mass mailing. You know, through your council, do you have a utility bill that goes out? Or a Facebook page, or ways that if I shared information with you, when people see this come in their mail, I don't want it to be thrown away. Because, oh, foundation, I just want my money, throw it away. I want them to open it, look at it, think about it. $20 is as important as $200 is as important as $2,000. Every little bit counts as you're building your fund. So I would be happy to share things with you. We're also doing a business match. We're doing, we're trying to hit businesses that might consider sharing, like as Red Arrow did, or United Way, if you're more familiar with them. If you're a business owner who have 10 employees, you encourage your employees to put something in the envelope, 10 bucks, 100 bucks, and then encourage the employer to match it. If a business for the city of Jasper or the community of Jasper, if an employee matches it, we're having a radio-thon in the foundation office, which is hooked to the Palace Theater in Laverne on the 11th, and your business gets to come in and have free airtime. So you can come in and say a name of a business in the community.
Jasper Minimo.
Minimo.
Jasper Minimo comes in and says, "We supported our community, the city of Jasper, with this match, blah, blah, blah." You can have a little free promo about what the Jasper Minimo does, and then walk out the door. So those are just some of the fun things we're trying to do. Wanted to share that this is coming. I'd be, who is I emailing with?
Me.
Perfect. I would love to know some of the businesses that might be of interest that we could make a visit with. There's no pressure. It's, you know, giving is a personal thing, whether it's because you want to, or you can, or we don't want, we're not going to strong-arm anybody. But this is for your community, and I know outside of Kenneth, you're my second-to-last visit, and the fact that it's about you has really excited people. So I hope that you, we can know each other better. We have a grant cycle here that is open until the end of September. If there is a project in the community that, and you're a qualified not-for-profit organization, we would love to see you apply, you know, signage, parks, you know. I need to know more about Jasper, so I need to know more about you people. So go on our website, L U V A C F dot org, and you go on the Grants tab, and you can see it's all an online application. It's very easy. We would love to come up here and give you some grant money for you to do some things. So does the council have any questions for me?
I do have a question.
Mm-hmm.
So let's say that Jasper does do this, and like you said, a park bunch. Does it have to be placed in Rock County? Because I know that there are certain grants, certain grants that it is specific to the county.
So it can't cross the railroad tracks?
Yes.
I would say that we will, being that we're local, that we're, as long as you're upfront about it, I don't think we're going to make a fuss. Pipestone is our neighbor friend. We're trying to be a southwest Minnesota, you know, organization that is friendly. So I think as long as you share with us that, hey, this is what we're doing, but it's going to sit in Pipestone County.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So now, will the Pipestone County residents be receiving this letter as well? Or just Rock?
They, it'll likely just be Rock.
Okay.
So if you had an opportunity to share it across tracks, that would be helpful to your cause. You know, anyone who identifies with the city of Jasper, we hope they'll consider it, so. And all that tracking is done at the community foundation. You know, we're a small, local, independent southwest Minnesota foundation. We have a pretty nice asset base, and we hope to add the city of Jasper to that and help you guys out with some longevity and vitality, so. Anything else?
Is there a way we could put that information in the water bill?
Yeah.
I know the water bill has got lots of stuff in it.
Yes.
When is your deadline for the water bill?
We actually will be getting them out probably on the 30th of this month.
So I'll email tomorrow. That'll be a priority for me, some information.
Yeah, perfect.
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 All right. Well, if you haven't heard of us, check us out. Those of you who get the Announcer, is that just a Rock County as well?
All of Jasper, yes.
Okay, every fall or every, end of every fiscal year, that publication is in the Announcer, and we'd love, again, love to see Jasper be a part of that. I'll leave the 2021s as well. You can see on the back, this was our attempt. The city of Hills has achieved their endowment, but they were one of the fortunates to get in on the meeting before COVID hit. So I'll just leave these here, and you can recycle them if you don't want them.
You said that it's open till the end of September for us to say we're interested?
Uh, no, that's separate. That's just for our, we have a fund called the Community Grant Fund, and we have a healthcare fund. And so if you have a project that is healthcare-based, that would be mental health, nutrition, nursing home, et cetera.
Did you see this?
Yeah. You can apply, or city beautification would fall under community, youth, you know, I don't know if you have a community hall, something like that. You can apply for grants to that fund. The Jasper Fund is separate, and whether you choose to participate is up to the people who consider themselves Jasper people. So that'll just be there until it either hits or it has no interest. So if anybody has a question about a grant, call me, and I'd be happy to talk you through. I know in Hardwick, we've done a lot with their community center. They needed some ADA updates, they did some kitchen updates. You know, that's a really important building in their community, and so we helped them with some things there.
Sounds good.
Well, thank you for the time, and have a good evening. Thank you.
Okay, next up, I have a few community concerns, and I wrote a few things down. I'd like to address the council and the community. I'll stand up here so we know what we can hear. First off, I'd like to address the council. I read an article this morning that I thought was relevant to our current times for our city council and our community, and it read, "As leaders, you've got to live in three different time zones: the past, the present, and the future. Everything you do has got to honor the past, deliver in the present, and set the table for a prosperous future. Tonight, I want to address the council as a concerned resident of Jasper, not as a person who doesn't live here, but as a resident of 36 years. The people that built our town were no doubt hardworking, talented men and women who wanted to improve their lives and set the town of Jasper up for a prosperous future. And they did, using their current-day building materials. The town was built with our local stone, and now, 100 years later, these buildings are reaching their life expectancy, and it's time to rebuild our town with current-day, energy-efficient, sustainable buildings so Jasper can be here for another 100 years. It's very frustrating to read Alicia Cortez's writings about how uneducated we are and how our priority is to demolish our buildings because we have no experience. And a carpet-bagging group tells us our buildings have been empty for over 50 years, and the people with no education should not be making these decisions. And then I see pictures on Facebook of unmasked, educated people working in the upstairs wall of Bowman Hall when they know that the plaster that that wall is made of is full of asbestos, unless they weren't told that information. Now, let's move forward. I'm very proud of Jasper's city council and the staff at our office and shop. Our council is engaged and asks all the right questions when making decisions. It's our responsibility to learn from our past, use our present-day resources, and guide our town to a sustained, stable, and prosperous future." That's my community concern. Next up, Kylie.
Courtney, do you have my drawings?
Yes.
So here is my thoughts for the bowling alley property, if we were to get that in hand. Courtney kind of worked on drawings. You guys can look, check it out. Has a full kitchen, full bar, everything will be in there. Metal building. It'd be cool if I could put some stone in there somewhere. Plan on trying to maybe do some Sunday breakfast. We're sure Monday through Saturday, it'll be breakfast, lunch, and supper. We need food in town again. I know this. It was bad when the bowling alley had to go, but it needed to. So it's time to bring it back, I guess. It would cost me an arm or leg to put a kitchen in the bar right now, let alone fix the front, and then put a kitchen in would cost me a lot. Then I have to upkeep the building and the roof every year, which is costing me even more.
Council have any questions? Courtney? What's that?
The only concern I, the concern I have is placing it in between what's there because it's not going to be a very decorative spot.
It's not. I was thinking more or less, you know, the front could have, you know, Courtsite, something in front. It looks like there's a patio built up there.
And are the buildings on the sides safe?
We actually do have a property owner over there, sorry.
You have two.
Joe and Kizzy are back here.
Oh, Richard Reek, thank you.
Thank you. There are two actual property owners.
Are the walls on the sides of those buildings? It would be terrible to build a new building.
I agree.
And have the same thing that happened with the front of yours. I mean, how safe are those buildings in that lot? That's my biggest concern. I would hate my heck to have you go through all the money, and building materials aren't cheap right now.
No.
And have something happen, and are those buildings insured to the point where they would compensate her for her damage? That's my big, it's, the building looks nice.
I have a question. Excuse me. Can the people out here ask questions?
Well, when I'm done, you can.
Okay.
But that's my big concern. I would love to see you have a nicer place to build.
I wish there was somewhere right on the highway, to be very honest. I wish, but there's really, there's not really an option on the highway. I mean, it would be awesome to be right on the highway so I could have all that traffic coming, seeing right, you know, everybody's driving by.
It's too bad you can't be like where Terry Rodman is or like where Baco is. But that's, that's my really big concern. It's, I mean, we want to improve the looks of the community, but sticking a nice building in between what we've got there is...
Now, Kizzy and Joe, I actually talked to Kizzy today, sorry. But they are actually fixing that whole entire building. Like Kizzy said, you know, they're working on the inside right now, so you can't see pretty much what they're doing.
But structurally wise...
Yes, yes. Now, they started top-pointing this past summer or whatever, and then life kind of got a hold of them. They had some things come up, so, yeah. But Kizzy actually showed us pictures of what they plan on doing with that front building. They're planning on replacing all the windows, that cascade that's up there, they're replacing that. It's going to be a very nice building once they're all set and done with it, you know? But first, they started at, in the inside, and then they're going to move to the outside. You know, and Kizzy's question too, when she came in here, was would she still be able to work on her property? You know, on the side walls and everything, which I showed Kizzy, you know, that it's a 44-foot building.
There are three feet on each side.
Three feet between each building?
Yep. No, they're not flush.
You were to move forward with this, like what's your timeframe to have this in place?
Uh, well, we are hoping if all goes good, we could have this cement and the shell done before snow flies. So it could be worked on in the winter, get things going. The timeframe that I got told from my engineer was one to two years on my building.
The current?
The current building.
Yep.
Do you have any plan for the current building?
Uh, we're gonna make it look nice, put a patch up on that wall. Something that's not going to cost me thousands and thousands of dollars to fix. Something to make it goodbye for now. Not sure what else to do, but I've been trying to get somebody that knows how to cut brick or cut that stone. He's like, "I'm in Laverne, and I've stuck here for months." Now they moved to another big job. So it's been kind of hard finding somebody that works with the stone that can cut something that big also.
Okay, can I talk, ask a question now?
Sure.
Thank you. Who owns the lot that the bowling alley used to be on?
The city of Jasper, is that?
The city of Jasper owns the lot?
Yes.
Okay. With this new construction, how much community money or tax money is going to go into building this building? Well, will she be buying the land back from the city?
So when the city actually purchased that land, they, back in, what, 2019, wasn't it, when the bowling alley came down? They had said if anybody was interested in redeveloping it, then they would look at it at that time. You know, just to actually, they're building up on Main Street again.
Our goal is to get that land redeveloped, and it will be given to, transferred to Kylie for probably $1 plus 50% closing costs. Many cities do this. Laverne buys blighted property all the time, clears them, and gives them to whatever developer would like to use that property.
Do they also have outside meetings with a specific business owner?
They have multiple business owner meetings.
Private meetings?
No.
Are all those meetings, then, all the meetings about the land and everything will be public?
Yeah. That will be here.
Yeah, we haven't done anything at this.
I didn't say "we." Like, is there individual people meeting with Kylie separately?
Not from the city council standpoint.
Nobody that's going to admit to it.
What are you insinuating? I understand what you're insinuating.
I feel like what I'm insinuating is what I'm insinuating. I literally just asked if there's been meetings outside of what's being, taking place right now.
There's other organizations in town.
Because when I, when you walked in, the very first thing you said to me, being an outsider that you think I am, is, "Isn't this a closed meeting?" You had a smile on your face until you saw me. So what is the problem with me during the budget meeting right here? It just, it feels funny, among other things that have been reported and other things that have been going on for over two years.
Reported from who?
Now Kylie has had one business in this town for quite a while. The only one you're curating is Kylie, and that's what I'm seeing. So I'm asking...
We're curating a successful business person.
Well, that's your perspective.
Is there any other places in town that are open?
Are you curating any other businesses so other people can? There's other small businesses that are Kylie, Kylie's had another, didn't you own another building in town?
I had the bowling alley with my mom for years.
So we're going to put all our money into somebody who's already proven that something fell apart. This building's falling apart. I'm just thinking it's real funny that we're curating somebody who's proven that they can't maintain whatever they have. So I just am asking the question where it's available.
But when I took over the buildings, the buildings were already junk.
Okay, well, what did you do? Who did you, there's Reclaim Community that has been in business for five years. Have you reached out to them?
And did they try to reach out to me?
It's not their job.
Yes.
Yes, they did.
Two weeks before my wall fell.
Oh, come on Kylie.
No.
Kylie, I've known you a lot longer than this. Maybe you don't know who I am, but I know who you are.
Two weeks before my wall fell, when this has been going on for many years.
You have chosen not to speak because you've made plans prior.
Nobody else.
These plans were made prior. That's why you didn't respond to things.
I didn't respond two weeks before because nobody offered you.
That's not true.
That's it. We'll move on. Any other questions of Kylie?
So Kylie, you're getting a loan, your own personal loan for all the building.
What will happen to the existing bar?
That will be looking at options.
That is, you own...
I own the bar.
You own the bar, you own the land.
I own the bar, I own the building, I own the land.
Okay. What are your plans for that bar?
I'm not sure yet. I'm going to be looking at options.
Are we going to tear that down?
I haven't, I can't afford to tear that down.
Does the city have any interest in that land?
I actually brought that up at the last council meeting just because of a blight issue. I did not mean to open up a whole can of worms, and I need to apologize to the council because I feel like I'm the reason that there was an editorial written about you guys. I feel like there is a reason that every single person in this town, including my dead mother, received a letter from Reclaim. You guys don't even know what's going on in this community right now, and I'm sorry. I'm going to have a moment here, so if you could just please take my minutes.
Any more questions of Kylie?
I'm wondering if the width of the building is, so it will fit in the open spot now? Okay.
Go ahead.
So as far as rain running off, it looks like the building is going to dump, you know, the roof planes are going to empty right between the buildings.
Yep.
So I'm hoping there's going to be some gutters or something?
Some gutters. We could definitely talk about that.
Because I mean, that water is going to go into the nearest hole, which is the basement of my building.
Yep, we could definitely figure that out.
Maybe even pour some concrete in there or something to make sure it doesn't infiltrate there.
Yep, we can discuss that if everything goes through or whatever.
So what happens?
Looks like you have another question back here.
Hello?
Well, I have a question, I guess, and I am in the middle. I mean, I kind of didn't get in the start of this thing. But I wonder if Kylie is aware of how much money a kitchen costs to pass inspection. I know three businesses that it costs them over $100,000 just to equip the kitchen to pass inspections. And that's, in my book, that's a heck of a lot of money.
I have a lot of equipment. I definitely know the expense of a kitchen, definitely. It's not cheap.
And with the plans that you have developed here and looked at, like, again, you have the financial backing to be able to make sure that, you know, like you don't start and then you can't finish.
No, no, it will be good.
If somebody else, some other business would come forward and say they wanted, they had some plans, is the council open to looking at any other businesses? Or is this now a done deal?
Other businesses for what?
Not a done deal at all.
I'm asking if, and I don't have a business that I want to put in there. I'm just asking if some, someone else would come forward and say, "I would like to build a building in that spot," how much time between today and whenever are you going to entertain any other ideas? Or are you not going to entertain any other ideas? Is this it? Is this the only option that we have for the town?
We've been entertaining this idea to this date. If this idea fails, we will look at other options.
Okay. What do you mean by "if this idea fails"?
We're going to pursue this relationship. If it works out, great. If it doesn't, we will move on and find another one.
Okay, but what if somebody came to the next council meeting and said, "I'd like to put a building, I've got these plans," would you entertain that idea?
If we're still working with Kylie, we'll have to, we're not going to dump Kylie in the middle of the stream. We're going to see that project to the end. If it works, fine. If it don't, then we'll move on and find an alternative.
Okay, so basically, it is, at this moment in time, it is Kylie, it is Kylie. Kylie's idea for a restaurant in that space, and that's what you're going to pursue, right?
Because Kylie approached them.
We have one space, we're going to work with a tenant until we can find, get that filled. If it doesn't, we'll move on.
I mean, as of today, Kylie's been the only business that has come forward asking for assistance and questioning the space.
I mean, as of today, Kylie's been the only business that has come forward asking for assistance and questioning those spaces available to use. There hasn't been any other businesses that have come forward to ask about that.
Okay.
I mean, it's been empty for years.
Basically, two years, but we won't go into there. But, I mean, have we advertised this, that this lot is for sale for a dollar for a business who will come in and do something? Or have we not? Have we done any advertising about this? The answer to that is, no?
What's that?
The only person that knows the dollar amount is Kylie.
Kylie's the only business again that's approached asking about it.
So, you have?
But if other, other businesses would approach if you offered it for a dollar, wouldn't you see?
Can I ask a question?
It would be filled immediately.
To me, it sounds like you guys own Kylie, Kylie's been in business here for a long time. Is there anything wrong with her?
I just, I just said, it seems like.
I don't, I don't know. You seem like you're looking to find something that is not there. Nobody's, nobody's about to give stuff away. You're assuming, but it's not, that's not what it is.
I work in finance. I'm all aware.
That's fine, because she's great, but I think.
It is great. That's why I know what I'm talking about.
She's been here, given an opportunity. We could get somebody else out of state that we don't even know.
There's people right here in the same room that could go there. They didn't know about the dollar for the lot.
You guys know about those meetings, so you couldn't find all the same information.
Right, they didn't know about this private meetings.
Have you got a lot to sell to the city for a dollar?
Why is that even relevant?
Do you wanna talk about this on Facebook, or do you wanna talk about it here?
He just, to me, he says, "Look at me."
A little out of hand, Mike?
A little professional.
Yes, we have to.
We, we, we need to be a little professional here, okay?
I agree.
We're trying to do that by having, you know, having this open meeting and have everybody to place their concerns or what have you. Ultimately, we're all here to do what's best for the community. And we, we are, regardless of what happened yesterday or what has been placed on Facebook, what have you, I think that's in the past, we're looking to move forward and, let's, and see what we can do as a community.
As board members, saying certain things on Facebook is really dangerous. That's what I'm gonna say.
I don't believe any of the board members that are sitting at this table.
Not right here. The one that was talking to me that I addressed.
These are our board members, our city council members are the ones that are seeing.
There's other board members that are working on a lot of this stuff.
You're talking to me? You're talking to me directly now?
Business development stuff?
Just because you made a ass remark about me, I could do few.
You're outside of, totally outside of our city. Like, we need to put a kibosh to this.
But you work with them, but you're not, you see, not on board.
No, you have nothing to do with that.
In the business developments, no.
I, I have a couple more questions, and I'll keep, I'll be civil. How does the JDC fit into this? Cause that's in the paper, I believe it said the JDC.
The JDC is a different, it's not an entity of a city, like I explained to you earlier, Randy. It is not an entity of the city by any means. The Jasper Development Corporation are the ones who are trying to, quote unquote, revitalize Jasper. They put up all those new spec houses out of West Jasper, all that. It is not a part of the city. The JDC is, and the JEDA is also not part of the city. They do fall underneath our insurance. They did that years ago for financial purposes. Otherwise, they do not fall underneath the city.
In the Pikeston paper, it was stated that, that she'd been working with the JDC. I'm just asking how the JDC fits into what her plan is.
What do you mean fits in? I don't understand.
It says in the paper that she had been working with the JDC. I don't know if that was misreported or.
The JDC's mission is to revitalize the town. And that's Kylie as a business owner in town, and that's why conversations were held with Kylie.
Okay, so is the JDC helping out in any way, or is just trying to promote the growth?
Promote the growth.
So, there's no, no dollar amounts or anything like that?
Not yet, but we're considering it. Yes, sir?
I just have a question in regards to the construction, the building itself. I haven't seen any plans, maybe it's in there. Would there be any kind of a fence in the backyard of the building? Um, a neighborhood property? Just kinda wondering what the back of the building's gonna be like as far as visually?
Um, on there, there's a back door with a little cement pad.
Would there be like an outdoor seating area or something?
That would only be up front. Outdoor smoking, yes, out back.
So, is the, is the rear of the bar gonna be a public area?
I'm not saying, I'm not saying that a lot of people are gonna go out back. Most people probably go up front. The back, I mean, plans haven't been nailed down to this is exactly what we're doing yet, so. It's just kind of a first rough draft.
I love your plans to put two courtside on the front of the building.
It's, it's stone law. It's gotta stay stone, some stone.
Yes, sir?
I'm just wondering, what's the budget for this building? And do you think that there's gonna be enough revenue to support that? I mean, just moving a location across the street, is it gonna be a that big of an increase?
When you add food to it, it makes a big difference. It does.
And along the highway, there's that machine shop that's for sale, the garage with the, you know, it's got some gas pumps up on, on what they call it, hooves?
Houses.
Houses, yeah. Anyway, that's for sale, and that's right along the highway.
And then I would have to tear it down, and then everything would have to be leveled, and then reconstruction would have to start, which would probably be a year from now before anything got started.
The price check for that is two hundred and twenty thousand.
That's what I was wondering about the budget and the revenue. You know, along the highway, is it gonna increase the business that much? There's a lot of people drive through, I don't know.
I think as long as there's a sign on the corner, that will help too.
Does Dennis own the, all that land, all the way to the county line?
I don't know where the property line is.
Yeah, I think he does.
So, there's a, a pretty good sized space there that maybe he'd be interested in selling, just an idea. Be along the highway.
Yes, sir?
Do you currently receive your truck delivery at the rear of your building?
Uh, they all come through the front. It will through the rear.
Sorry, be on the same road, do you mean?
It would be through the rear, through the back doors.
In the new building?
Yep, through the alley.
And to the alley?
So, they would actually have to come from the east side, right? Cause, I mean, Kizzi and I were kinda talking about it with your building and that, and Richard's building. They won't be able to turn that way, so.
Are you gonna have a loading dock on there, or just carve it out the same way?
Cement. I don't use the loading dock that I have.
Will we be informed on, both Joe and I, will we be informed on what the plans are between the buildings before construction starts?
I think that's an issue between your neighbors. That's between Kylie and you and Joe.
The, um, the, I read in the paper that you had insurance on your building. And when the stone fell, um, would, did the insurance cover any of the building damage?
Nope.
So, then, and the new building, with new construction, you have to do dirt work and all of that. And our buildings, our walls are being tuck pointed, we're repairing them currently. So, they haven't been assessed by an engineer or anybody yet to see the structural integrity of our building along the bouldering walls of your building. So, if you pull out the dirt work in the middle up between our buildings, will the structural integrity of our buildings be compromised? And then, when you put in new concrete, since there is no code for leveling for Jasper, and where it needs to be, would it pour more, more water into our untuck pointed walls? And cause our foundation to be compromised? Have you considered this?
That's a lot of things I have no clue about, to be very honest. That would, you would probably have to talk to somebody about that. I don't, I don't know if that, if you're.
My contractors are.
And it takes down two buildings next to it, that could be damaging to the city of Jasper. So, I ask that that be considered.
I'm sure your contractor will be involved in that. Okay, anything else?
You're just gonna pour a slab, aren't you?
Yep.
They're gonna be puddings, or just slab on grade?
I really haven't talked about it a whole lot. They said this is just, we put plans together, came up with an idea. That's where we're at.
So, at this point, do you have a, kind of a basic idea of how much this whole thing will cost from beginning to end?
We're working on estimates now.
And will?
We have a drawing. It's about it. I've met with a few people for estimates. That's where we're at.
So, how much time do we have to get our buildings assessed before you start building, before we have to be able to say our buildings are sound enough for you to put out our dirt work?
I don't know what exact date when we're gonna build it. I don't even know if I can build there. I haven't made a decision. So, I mean, we're, it's one thing at a time. I don't have a fine, perfect time to say when I have to start building.
When the bowling alley came down, your building was fine with that activity?
Well, the previous owners said that the front window cracked. I mean, they don't live in town, so, I mean, they don't know for sure, but it wasn't cracked. Then the bowling alley was tore down, then it was cracked, so.
And we had, we had some wall damage too when it came down, but we just didn't make a fuss.
How deep did you go when you took it down?
Whatever was necessary to.
I mean, three feet or ten feet or?
I don't remember.
Did all the concrete come out?
I don't remember how deep it was.
If you don't engage us, if you don't engage us, uh, sorry, I wanna say this publicly. If you don't engage us before construction starts, we're gonna spend years on lawyers. I got a guy that charges me next to nothing for, as a lawyer. We'll, we'll do this for years. We, I gotta know that my building is safe.
Sure.
I mean, I think you have the starting point of what you want it to look like, but I still think you need to have a new business plan to present, to cost wise timeframe. And some of these concerns will, to be able to move forward, and again, I think again, is, you know, all of us trying to support the community. We don't want to have issues with neighboring buildings or, you know, with neighbors of our community as well, so. I, I do think we need to have, you know, more of a, a designated business plan. And that's kind of what was discussed last time, was to have, financial wise versus timeframe, I mean, this is great to start.
One thing, we're not her banker.
I agree, yeah.
Yes, ma'am?
If her insurance did pay out on her building though, would her insurance, while the building, pay out on our building?
Did insurance pay out on Boman Hall when the rocks hit the ground?
I don't know.
Same thing.
So, they had insurance and it didn't pay out?
I don't know.
Why are we talking about a different building? It's a real big question.
Rocks are falling off buildings.
Yeah, it's not the same. That's not the same.
We're talking about a business.
Anything else for Kylie?
I have a question. Sorry, I'm sitting down.
Okay.
Sorry. Um, I was wondering if, okay, completely don't know anything about restaurants or construction or anything, so take that for what you will. But, is, was there a comparison done between the cost of fixing what you already have versus building a new thing? Like, is it greatly, like, way, way, way better? And, not better, but more cost effective to build a new versus repairing what you do have? And I don't know anything about kitchens, but what makes it more expensive to install a kitchen in the building you have versus a new building?
Well, for one, the more expense for the hood vent, you're going through two stories. There's really not a good place to put a hood vent in that building.
Okay.
You're going through so much more. You have to drop it down, you have to use a crane and drop it down in the building.
Okay.
Which makes it more difficult.
Okay. And more sensitive because it's two layers.
Yep.
Okay.
And then you're going through, you know, everything. Uh, stone wise, I didn't get a cost, or, you know, to see how much to fix the face of that. But there's spots all over that entire building that need to be fixed.
That would cost more than building a new building.
The last quotes I'd had was from over three and four years ago, and that was seventy-five hundred to keep it from moving. That was to keep it where it was. It was twenty to twenty-two thousand to fix it right.
To make it?
To make that wall where it was supposed to stay.
Where it should be, so then the new building would cost less than that?
Well, it's more than that, cause now there's no stone there. So, you would have to pay somebody to come in, redo that first layer that's inside, and then you'd have to have somebody redo the second layer outside. You'd have to find somebody that can fix, that can lift all those heavy blocks. And then you have to go around the rest of the building, find where they're coming out. You have to re-tuck point the whole building down there.
Okay, so, so from the analysis you did, it costs more to fix the old building than to make a new?
My engineer told me the building is not in good shape. He said you could get by one to two years on it. Other than that, you're pushing it.
I think that's just current, current state of fixing what's broken, not updating.
That's not getting into it more.
Right, cause you, your plans were to also update, to add more, to bring more business as well. So, that's, would be additional cost regardless, because that was probably your goals prior to this happening.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Kylie, I have one question for you for that, uh, old building you have now, that opening in front. Are you planning to close that off, especially for the winter?
No, I'm just gonna let the snow fly in, shoot cool, it's snowbath.
I don't know, it's no.
Yeah.
You know, fireman, that's the least thing I wanna be in there pulling people out, because.
We got some plans in, we got some.
Something I'll start this, you know.
Hopefully, maybe next weekend, maybe this weekend, we'll see how things go. Make it look pretty, uh.
So, um, since we're concerned about the integrity of our building and everything, would the city be willing to buy the buildings next door to facilitate Kylie's growth of her new business?
I think that's a fair question.
Good question.
Somebody said you do that? Are you trying to do that?
I don't think we can answer it upfront right now, just like that.
I mean, you know, it depends on what you want for the old building, you know?
Yeah, I think it's something new though.
I think that's something like for the next meeting that we have, is they bring forth your information and what you're looking at, and, and talk to, consider.
Anything else of Kylie?
You were talking about putting a hood through two stories. I was just wondering, isn't, on the side of the building where the front fell off, isn't there room on the back of that for some sort of addition?
There's not room for an addition.
Oh?
No. Probably the most convenient place for a kitchen in that place is up front, right by the office door, and then you're going through two stories. Uh, if you put a kitchen in the back where my old cooler used to be, you are running all the way to the back to cook, and then all the way back out front. There's no way one person could do it.
If I could put a little, on the subject here, the, I did some checking for a square foot of that building, and what it cost to tuck point it. And it's gonna cost, it would cost her like forty thousand dollars to tuck point that building, and that wouldn't include the fixing of the front. When you go to tuck point it every eight feet up, it's starting to double the price, and it's gotta be at least a thirty-two foot high building. You know, so, it's gonna cost, it would cost close to forty thousand dollars to tuck point it.
What would it cost for repointing?
Pardon?
What would it cost for repointing instead of tuck pointing? What would it cost for repointing instead of tuck pointing?
Repointing?
Repointing is the way you.
Tuck point, it needs tuck, these rocks need to be tuck point.
They're not the same thing.
They need to take that, that old cement and that sand out and put new.
I understand that. What I'm saying is.
That's tuck pointing, that's what it means.
What I'm not saying is, there's a difference between tuck pointing and repointing. Tuck pointing is a modern contracting term for modern construction. Repointing is the requirements of the Department of the Tier's National Register Standards for historic buildings. So, if, repointing is different than tuck pointing. Cause our architects and engineers are, are designing the repointing for Boman Hall, but they have been very specific telling us it is not tuck pointing, it's called a repointing, because it's particular to historic buildings. So, I just wanted to see if you had, had gotten a quote for somebody who, repointing versus tuck pointing or not, okay? Just, I'm, cause that would be something to consider, but, um, is this a time that I can also speak?
Do you want to address Kylie? That's where. Do you want to address Kylie? That's where.
Yeah, yeah, well, basically, I had, I had a few questions for council too, but, um, uh, the first thing I wanted to address is, I think there have been a couple misconstrued, my comments in my letter to the editor being misconstrued. First of all, when I stated that people weren't experienced in historic preservation trades, I meant historic preservation trades. There are plenty of good contractors in this area, and people are experienced in trades, but I have been stressed by my architects, this is very different. So I am not saying that there aren't people, very good contractors and experienced people here. I'm saying historic preservation trades, which is a specific designation that follows Department of the Interior standards, and that's what for a building like ours on the National Register is required. So that's why I put historic preservation trades. I'm not saying people aren't experienced in whatever they're experiencing. I'm saying contractors around here, I have not found one yet who's experienced in preservation trades, because we have been looking for RSPs for our buildings, so that's why I'm saying that. So I think that was misconstrued, first of all. Um, secondly, yeah, I did reach out to Kylie earlier before her facade fell, because we have been working on trying to develop a community foundation with the Southwest Initiative. Because we wanted to start providing, raising some money through our organization to help create facade easements like the city of Pipestone has, to help business owners if they have a facade problem. Now, it's not my business to run a business, and if her best business decisions build new, I'm in full support of that, actually. I think a lot of people think that I'm not, and that's not true. That's also been misconstrued. I would be happy for her to build a new building in town. I think that's great, and we would support that, just like we'd support anything else. My only concern here has always been the fate of the Stonewall Bar, because that is a part of the strategy that we have been developing for five years to revitalize the community. That does not mean we can't have new buildings. So I, I, if other people have construed that, that's not how I feel. And I would be more than happy, and the reason we reached out to, to you then is because we had, Terry has been watching the facade and been talking about, I'm kinda concerned. So we thought, as a 501(c)(3), we have access to grants, hundreds of thousands of dollars of grants, and I taught myself to grant, right, I've spent five years going to trainings and educations, and I wanna help the community. And I came here to do that, because I, I grew up here, and I love it, and I wanna move back here, I just haven't been able to yet. So, I came here because, and, and reached out to her, to you, because I, I know you're busy, and I messaged your Facebook page and stuff, and I don't know who operates that.